Welcome, everybody. Nice to have the students here. We have everybody here, including our student representatives today. I didn't see any additions to the meetings or the agenda. So we would, at this point, look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Salute.
Second.
Motion from Rick, second from Jacob. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say no. Carried. Anybody here for public comment? So, seeing none, and you don't have anybody signed up.
No.
We're then on to the consent agenda. And so, we have the minutes of the meeting, and then we'll go to Cheryl for bills.
Was able to go in and look through the bills, and it was all normal school business. Nothing jumped out at me.
Okay. We have some donations. Matt, you want to...
Yeah, so Cold Spring has donated forty-five hundred dollars to our robotics team. Thank you very much for that. And Sterns Electric donated a thousand dollars to our pop packs. That is the program that we are able to send food and snacks home over the weekend with students that need those. So, thank you to Sterns Electric as well. The personnel items, targeted services, there's three teachers that are starting, or that will be putting in targeted services hours at the elementary school. Those actually started this morning. And then we have our custodian, Mr. Schumacher is going to be moving into the vacated position by Brett Pungam. We're still searching and advertising for another custodian. So if you know of anybody who is looking for full-time employment, we do have a position open and could offer them that. Keep us in mind, but those are the personnel items. Questions?
The three that are, you said, moving to the elementary, weren't they in the elementary?
The targeted services?
Yeah.
The three staff members, that program right now is only in the elementary?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you said they're moving to the elementary. I'm like, aren't they in the elementary?
No, Jen Wears is in both buildings, but the other two are just at the elementary.
Right.
If I said moving, I said the wrong word.
Nope, that's fine.
Okay, we'll be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion from Thomas.
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no. Carried. Then we're on communication items. So, Matt, I'll let you take over.
I just have one item. It seems like we actually just met. It was only, I think, eight business days ago, so we did just meet, so I don't have a lot to report. The one thing I will say is I have been in contact with MSBA again for the board self-evaluation process. My plan was to let them know that we are interested in moving forward with that. So if, for some reason, there are board members that feel other than that, I've not gotten that perception from anybody, so I was going to go ahead and engage MSBA in that and get that process started. I believe, once I do that, then they will reach out to all board members with a, like a Survey Monkey, Survey Monkey survey, or something along those lines. So just keep an eye out for that in your email. I will let them know that we're interested in getting that started. Probably, given the time of year, it'll start right after the first of the year, is what I'm suspecting.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's what I have for you. Any questions for me?
So then, next, we have the student report.
I don't have anything right now. I'll be talking later, so I'll just stay there for then.
I don't have anything.
Same thing. Okay, committee reports. We have facilities committee and a policy committee. Policy, it looks like some of theirs is coming up.
It's coming up.
Anything on the facility committee at this point?
Mass sent some information out to us already as well. Better meeting last week, Wednesday. We're sitting pretty good on some of our decisions, but really gonna hold off and kind of wait to see how this, the bidding process goes for the sixteen million dollar project before we look too far. But we're making some progress, I guess, on what we're looking at for indoor air quality and other projects in the district.
Okay. Then, we move to old business. I see none.
Correct.
New business? We have, is this our senior high to begin with? Okay, we have the senior high student representative report, and we have the students. So go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, do you guys mind, and do you mind just making sure that you do share the mic so that we pick up the audio appropriately for the recording? We can move some chairs, too. If you wanna put some more chairs up around there, we can sure do that.
Or you wanna just move the mic?
Or you can move the mic, but we can do it however we want.
Let's see if they can problem solve. Of course they can. How they're doing with this here. It's pretty good. They figured it out.
I am a four-year student council member. I'm the current president.
Turn the mic down.
Okay, I'm the president. Skylar Berg is not here today, but she is another four-year member, and she's the vice president.
Ashley, I am a four-year member. I'm the president. Skylar Berg is another fourth-year member. She's the vice president. She's not here right now. Our advisors are Mrs. Whaler and Jackie Campbell. This is a rough count on my part, but we have around nine seniors, six juniors, eight sophomores, and nine freshmen. We coordinate and put on many events throughout the school year, and each one of us are going to introduce ourselves, and then we'll tell you a little bit about each event.
I'm Shelby Ruoff. I'm a three-year member and also a senior. My officer position is a public relations officer.
I'm Amanda Meyer. I've also been on for three years, and I'm a senior, and I am the secretary, so I just take notes at all of our meetings.
I'm Ally Copener. I'm also a senior. I've been on it for three years, and I'm with Shelby on public relations.
And I'm Elizabeth Thutch. I've been on it for three years. I'm a junior, and I'm our event coordinator, and I have a little sidekick. Skylar Berg also helps out with that, so.
Okay, so we'll start with homecoming tryouts. So, that's for, like, the homecoming coronation. We schedule the facilities, the date and the time, and then we conduct the tryouts. We provide the music for whatever acts needed. We organize contracts for the talent acts to read and sign, and then we follow up with them and make sure that they're ready to perform so the coronation can run as smoothly as possible.
Okay, and then I'll talk about the homecoming royalty balloting. Student Council is in charge of creating the ballots to distribute via Google Forms, collect and tally. We contact candidates and attendants and have them sign contracts and collect information needed for coronation. We also create the final ballot for king and queen voting and distribute via Google Forms, and then collect and tally again. We also make envelopes with winners' names and be announced during coronation.
All right, I have homecoming coronation and for student council. We schedule the talent and talent tryouts, facilities and dates and times for homecoming coronation, order flowers, crowns, coronation tux rental, rental, tuck rentals. Sound and light technicians collect contracts from attendants, candidates, and talent acts. And MCs coordinate with pencil press for pictures. We order or make decorations for, needed for coronation, make a program to dispute to parents. We make a, oh wait, are you, we make free passes and dispute to parents. We design coupons to distribute to paying students for a dollar off their dance admissions so, like, if the sophomores have, like, food for our dances, then they get a dollar off since they brought food, or the other way around. We collect and organize candidate information for videos and making the videos, meet with MCs to read through the script to get time for approximate running time of the ceremony, supervise and set up, practice running through the actual ceremony, organize student council members to set up and take down for the coronation and perform assigned tasks.
The next event that we do is the homecoming pep fest for kindergarten through twelfth grade, and we have to coordinate with elementary school for the arrival time and coordinate with a sound and light technician, also with the pencil press for pictures, the band teacher for musical needs, our fall coaches for their assistance with activities. We also have to order or make decorations needed for the pep fest and contact coaches, local businesses, community education for student prizes during the pep fest, and we make a script for the MCs to follow during the pep fest and ensure all musical needs are met for the talents. And we meet with the MCs to read through the script to get the approximate running time of it, and we supervise the setup, practice, run-through, and actual pep fest, and we also organize student council members to set up and take down for the pep fest and perform assigned tasks.
The next thing we do is the homecoming dance. We schedule music, facilities, and date time for the dance. We provide beverages, organize chaperones for the event, organize student council members to set up, take down for the dance, and perform assigned tasks. And recently, we also have added games and stuff to make it more appealing for the high schools, so we have more members coming.
All right, and then we do football pep fest, preschool through kindergarten, or twelfth grade. We schedule talent and talent tryouts, facilities and date times for the pep fest, coordinate with elementary school for arrival time, coordinate with the sound and light technician, coordinate with pencil press for pictures. We make a script for MCs to follow during the pep fest, ensure music, and meet with MCs to read through scripts to get time for approximate running time through the pep fest, supervise and set up, practice running through the actual pep fest, and then organize the student council members to do the pep fest.
Next, we have our blood drive, which is coming up next Friday. It is our biggest event that we have. We have a lot of people that donate for the first time, so that's pretty cool. We work with the Red Cross, so they bring their staff, and then we get everyone signed up, and we help, we all bring in our own snacks and juice and stuff like that. So when people are done donating, they have something to eat, and then we also, like, sit with them by their beds, because most people are really nervous, especially if it's their first time. We typically meet or exceed our goal, and that's normally around, like, seventy. We do have a lot of referrals, being that people, it's their first time, or they're really nervous, or they didn't know, oh, I whatever, have this piercing, so I can't do it. But other than that, that's, like, our big event that's coming up really quickly, so.
So next, I have the Sweet Fest tryouts. Student Council schedules facilities and date and times for Sweet Fest tryouts. We provide musical accommodations, organize contracts for talent acts to read and sign. We then follow up with talent acts that need more guidance and ensure that they are performance-ready.
Next, we have the Sweet Fest royalty balloting. Student Council creates the ballots and distributes them to the students, and they collect and tally them. And we contact candidates and attendants and have them sign contracts and collect information needed for coronation. And we also create the final ballot for king and queen voting, distribute that to the students, and then collect and tally again, and make an envelope with the winner's names to be announced during coronation.
The next big event we do is Sweet Fest coronation. We schedule talent and talent tryouts, facilities and date time, order flowers, crowns, coordinate tux rental, sound and light technician, collect contracts from attendants, candidates, and talent acts, and MCs. We coordinate with pencil press for pictures of candidates for press and follow-up photos at the coronation, order or make decorations needed for the coronation, make a program to distribute to parents and participants of the events, make a script for the MCs to follow during the coronation, ensure musical needs are met for talent acts, collect and organize candidate information for the video, make video and review said video prior to ceremony, meet with MCs to read through script to get time for approximate running time of ceremony, supervise a setup, practice run-through, and actual ceremony. The next event we do is a Sweet Fest dance. Similar to the homecoming dance, we schedule music, facilities, and date time, provide food and beverages, and organize chaperones for the event. Next is the food drive. Promote, March Food Shelf Month through the collection of items to be given to the community service center, coordinate pickup and weighing of food and other items so the matching fund can be accessed by the community service center to provide for our needy families.
And then the next event after that, we have the food shelf reward event. So we organize the food shelf reward event with the high school students, with a dodgeball tournament, and then we coordinate the yearbooks with the yearbook staff.
So our next big event is Fun in the Sunday. Student Council is in charge of scheduling the music, facilities, and date and time for Fun in the Sun. We select the menu choice and coordinate prizes from area businesses for students. We organize student council members to set up and take down activities, or, for example, beanbag toss, softball game, and clean up cafeteria and outside, and perform other assigned tasks. We also coordinate with food services for the cooks out that day and track down grills to be brought in and extra gas cans if needed to grill the burgers for the student body. We now have, we next have the student council elections. So Ashley's our president, and Skylar Berg is our vice president. They...
Can you explain?
Yeah.
We just kinda oversee everything, so, like, all of our events, we're there, and we just make sure everything goes smoothly. And there's a lot of times Mrs. Whaler might need help with something, or since they have, like, classes, they don't always have time to do stuff, so then we help out with that.
Okay, and then, as a public relations officer, I am in charge, or me and Ally are in charge of, like, for our blood drive, we're in charge of setting up the posters, getting the word out that we're having the blood drive, and getting people to hopefully sign up for it.
As secretary, like I said before, I take notes during meetings and just make sure we remember all the little details that go into planning all of our events.
I'm with Shelby, so what she said, we basically just tell everyone about the events we're putting on.
As an event coordinator, we pretty much just set up, make sure there's music, tell everyone to come out and have, have fun. Pretty easy.
Okay, so the next thing I have is something new that we are in the process of working on, I guess. So it's with the American Heart Association, and it is called the American Heart Challenge. So it's an opportunity to do good while feeling good. Students will take heart healthy challenges, so we're thinking, like, short trivia questions, stuff like that, throughout the day, to raise awareness for the leading cause of death in our country, and then we'll raise funds to fight heart disease and stroke. It's a way for students to better their lives, all while saving someone else's. So we're gonna be selling T-shirts at a few sporting events. We're thinking, like, a boys' and a girls' basketball game, and then we are gonna work with the coaches to see if, like, it would be possible for the team to maybe be wearing the shirts already, and so it, you know, we can kinda make it, like, a thing, just like cancer is, like, a big deal. We'll make this heart challenge a big deal, too.
And then lastly, throughout the year, we have meetings, and that's just time to work with our student council members to prepare for events that take place throughout the year, and smaller details such as dress-up days for homecoming and Sweet Fest, and we discuss other student body needs. And then throughout the year, we also need to submit proper paperwork to reimburse individuals and companies for expenses, such as mic nights for music, flower and crown orders for coronations, and various other expenses that occur during the year. And we also hold elections for officer positions. And lastly, we collaborate with BNC News for the blood drive, food shelf, and Fun in the Sun for promotional purposes.
Is it?
Yeah.
Do you guys have any questions?
Okay. Wait a minute. No. Okay, I got a couple. This is not a trick question, by the way. This is just a, give us some thought question. Homecoming's a big deal, right?
Yeah.
What's the purpose of homecoming?
Um, I don't know.
I guess it's not really a trick question, I'm just curious.
Yeah, to show your school spirit and, yeah.
Like, it's a big school thing, just to bring everyone together, and something important for two past graduates come back from college.
Yeah, that's the main purpose of it, but I don't think we do anything for the alumni anyway, so it's not really homecoming. Sometimes I wonder if it shouldn't be relabeled Spirit Week or something instead of homecoming. But anyway, I just, we do things every year, and I just sometimes think, maybe we should stop back once, well, why are we doing it? The other question I had is, you're talking about the American Health Association, the health and all that, and that's, it's really concerning for me, is this whole vaping epidemic. We're talking about being healthy, and yet we hear about large percent of kids who are doing some really unhealthy things. Are you, as a student council, doing anything, or do you see the school doing anything to try to combat this, or try to get education out there?
I mean, we can't really, I mean, there's posters around the school, I don't know if you've saw, like, any of those that tell you, I mean, people know it's not good for them. I mean, I don't really know what else we can do. We personally can't, like, line up, like, speakers or anything like that, so I guess that'd probably be a question for more, like, administration, Mr. Orline, about if we're having someone come in or anything like that. I mean, we don't really have a way to make people stop. I mean, we're taught that it's not good, so. I mean, if people are gonna do it, they do it, and I don't know, they don't really listen to us, so.
But you are the examples for them, too. You are the leaders.
Yeah, I mean, we try to do our best, but, like I said, people know that they shouldn't do it, and they still do, so.
Other questions?
Thank you for what you do. I think it's a great experience. I mean, just listening to you being, your organization, seeing a project through, those are all skills that are gonna apply to you in life, so thank you for taking this on its extra time and work, I know what you're putting into it. And when I was in student council, we didn't do any of that. So I'm like, wow, you guys do a lot of stuff, so thank you.
Thank you very much. So next, we'll have the middle school students and the representative report.
Yeah, I saw that.
You know, I was supposed to do it. I'm never gonna get a class read.
That's your job. How did you realize that? Okay, that helped.
I've never done it. I was the president of my senior class. Secretary took care of it.
Good.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Katie Gunn.
I'm Josiah Uch.
I'm Paige Frenchick.
I'm Kayden Zeroski.
I'm Erin Pritchett.
And I'm Augie Vanderweist.
We are here to represent the middle school student council and the middle school students. We came to discuss the positives of the school and some, and some things we, as students, would like to change.
There have been new things changed about the school, like the block scheduling, e-learning and electives. Everyone seems to enjoy, to be enjoying the new schedule because it gives us more time to get the help and classes we need with homework and stuff like that, and we only have to worry about four classes instead of seven every day.
So we already had an e-learning day. It went pretty well, like, teachers didn't give us too much for assignments, so generally it was something good to have. Electives are a huge plus, because it gives us the opportunity to explore different classes and things we like that we might not have known about.
And with the electives, some classes, like the weightlifting class, is offered for the high school, and maybe some middle schoolers would like to participate in that also, so maybe provide that for the middle school also.
Some people have said that they don't like the one-quarter gym requirement, they think it should be two quarters, and we feel this way because if you have gym the first quarter of the year, you're just going through the rest of the year, not doing any physical activity if you aren't in any sports.
To go more with the gym, seventh and eighth grade equipment for gym is a little worn out and deflated. And the topic of making things nicer, we, as students, would like the bathrooms to get fixed up. That means any type of vandalism to get covered up, and some things don't work, like, some will spray, they go too fast, or some don't really stay on that long.
Those are just some of the main problems we've noticed, but we just bring this up because we, if we have people visiting our school from other schools, we don't want them to see our school as a school that is not respected by the students because of profanity on stalls and overall poor quality in bathrooms. Also, the courtyards are very messy with garbage and food laying around. I have seen trays even in the bushes.
And off what he said, like, he said about the vaping presentation, that'd be nice, that would be nice in our school because it's a big problem. There was one for the parents, and we feel like there should be one for students so they can get educated on why it's really bad for them.
Just another concern that we had was that students want to be able to leave the lunchroom to go to other teachers to get help with their homework, or some people like to go to the Innovation Center and work on, like, some things on, like, their carving and the glow forge, but so far this year, we haven't been allowed to. Even if there is, like, a sign note, we've had some students get told that they're not allowed to go, even though last year, when we got told about the block scheduling and electives, we did get promised an EST time during lunch, so.
And also, along with the lunch, the, I personally don't eat the school lunch, but I've heard a lot that pizza is served a lot of days of the week, and they recommend not having that served as many times.
There isn't a lot of tech support or loners. Half the time, no one is in the tech office, and there are zero loners left, so students get stuck without a Chromebook for days or weeks because either no one is in there to help fix theirs, their Chromebooks, or there isn't any loners available.
So to have maybe some extra loners available, to have tech people in there to help, would be nice.
That's really it. Any questions?
Middle schoolers are my favorite. I love you guys. You just say it like it is, and I, I love that.
Along with the vaping situation, I feel like if we had inspiring quotes, like, in the bathrooms, that would try and, that would make teens maybe decide, maybe this isn't good for me, like, that poster's right, maybe, like, I'm doing something bad, and, like, I, there's always somebody looking out to me, so if I'm doing something bad, then maybe there is someone that decides, oh, if he does it, then I can do it, or if she does it, yeah. Yes, any other questions?
I've been on the board for a little bit of time, but we have lots of things that happen because of what your kids tell us, or your students tell us. We have, one time it was lunch programs, the other time it was just outside the window there with your courtyard, so lots of things, and it's nice to hear from you directly on your thoughts.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Are you enjoying the use of the courtyards?
Um, yes. There is a lot of people in the spring and fall that go out and play spike ball, or some kids, even in the winter, they still go on with the football season and are tossing around the football, too.
I have a question. You brought forward a lot of great concerns. Do you have another, like, time or opportunity that you're sharing these concerns with administration and other staff, or is it kind, is this the place and time where?
I think this, yeah, I think this is the main opportunity where we get to share our thoughts and concerns.
So, is anybody listening? We are.
We are.
Mm-hmm. Is anybody else? Any questions? Well, thank you very much, you did a very nice job with your report.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Keep up the good work. Give your mic. Oh. Oh. Yeah. We'll have to get that mic back to them. Okay, then we'll move to the world's best workforce. Yeah, we'll have to get that mic back to them. Okay, then we'll move to the world's best workforce and, um, Don Knoll.
We do have a paper copy of it coming through too. All right, so there, I'm Don Knoll, I'm one of the advisors for the middle school student council as well as Kelly Whaler. And they took a little bit different tact than the high schoolers did, but when we asked them, you know, gave them that responsibility and whatnot, asked them what they wanted to talk about, they said, can we? And I said, absolutely. And I said, these are the people that you make that report to. And I was telling some other people that they came up with them, I didn't even see what they were gonna say. I knew what some of the topics were, but I think they did a very fine job doing it, putting it together. My job today is to talk about the world's best workforce. We have three of the board members that were at our meeting that we had in November, so I apologize if this sounds like a little bit of a repeat. The world's best workforce is a requirement by the state that basically is a one-size-fits-all strategic plan for all schools across the state. And when we look at it, there are, as you can see on the second one, there are five main goals that every school needs to address and have in their plan that we send to the state. First one is that are all, all children are ready for school. It used to say all children are ready for kindergarten, they've changed the wording a little bit. The second one is all third graders can read at grade level. And that's, falls right in line with the Read Well by Third Grade. Achievement goals are closed, it used to say all achievement goals, and they have changed it moving into next years to say that it's either racially or economically based achievement gaps that we might have. Students are ready for career in college when they graduate from here, and all students graduate from high school. Those are the ones, the goals that are set up that are prescribed by the state of Minnesota and the Department of Education that says, this is what we should be looking at. Right now, the reporting portion that comes in is on the North Star Accountability Report. And I'll get to that a little bit later on. One of the changes has come, of what they tell us, is instead of it being punitive, if you don't meet these goals that are set, it's gonna be collaborative. So if somebody is doing something well, we can go to that school and say, what did you do? Can we borrow it, or steal it, or whatever the case may be? And some schools might look to us for some of those things that we're doing well as in addition, instead of saying you are a school that isn't meeting the requirements. We're supposed to let you know what our goal was, how we did, and then what we're looking at going forward. I'm not gonna take the time to read to you as far as anything that's there, so I'll just come up with some of the high points. With the students ready for kindergarten, looking at it, we have a multi-tiered system of checking to see if our students are ready for kindergarten, and we've developed that more and more over the years. It used to just be that we had kindergarten readiness and it was a locally created assessment. Now we've got our preschool program that is in place, so we have lots of students that are going through some of the readiness screenings that we have there. Our goal is that all students be ready for kindergarten, it doesn't tell us what that means. So in looking at it, our screeners look at a variety of things. Based, you know, everything from their motor learning to identification of different animals that is going to be at their academic level and those types of things. Of this year's kindergarten class, we had a really good turnout, we've got sixty-four of sixty-nine students that went through our screening. We had, in the full report, we've got some information about how many were identified as potentially needing help. We're looking at making sure that now we include that, that checkpoint a month into the school year. Because we, we do it and we just hadn't put it into the plan, so we're looking at that, going into that portion. With the Read Well by Third Grade or Third Grade Literacy, we have used in the past our MCA scores and mainly because it's been prescribed as the easy one from the state. And that doesn't necessarily tell us what individual students know, because it's a one-day, one or two-day test. And if that student isn't feeling well on that day or whatever else, we may not have a good indication. We have adopted the use of FastBridge as a screening system that is gonna have benchmarks throughout the year. And we're using this year as a time to collect baseline data so we can look at student growth over the year instead of a one-shot thing on that test. So we're, this year is kind of our data collection, and then we'll have some information to be able to compare it to. When we look at the close of the achievement gap, our biggest group that we are identified with is our students that are on free and reduced price meals. As far as our socioeconomic, we don't have any particular racial group that were large enough to create what is considered a cell size, and this is across the board. We know that poverty is an issue that can be hidden. And looking at it, what's good for kids that are on free and reduced lunches, good for kids all the way around. The problem that comes in is when you close that achievement gap, the way it should happen is they're saying those students that struggle the most need to increase the most. Where if we're increasing with our non-free and reduced student population, and they're going up, and then let's say they go up by two percent, the expectation would be that our free and reduced students that are struggling the most and might not have the supports at home, they need to increase even faster. Looking at it, we did decrease the gap a little bit, but we did it the wrong way. Our non-free and reduced students went down and our free and reduced students stayed about where they were. So the gap decreased, but not through the right process. Then when, we've got a chart that just gives you the information for the details, shows where it is. The red shows some of the changes in both math and reading proficiency, because those are the, the areas that are tested. Again, we're using MCA scores there. And again, we're gonna look at having a better data process that we're gonna look at, so it's not that one-time shot with that test on the MCAs. Though they're not going away, but it's not a good measurement for, is the student growing? Because there are so many factors that we can't control on a high-stakes test like that.
Will you take questions as you go, or do you want us to wait till the end?
Whatever you prefer.
So if you go back to the last slide.
Sure, no problem.
So explain that, compare us to other schools with their math proficiency and their reading proficiency. It doesn't look like it's going in the right direction.
For us, it doesn't look like it's going in the right direction, but everybody in the state is doing the same thing.
So that's, it's similar all over, because at one time when you, when we first started with this world best workforce, they were changing parameters all the time on you. So it made these look bad, but they really weren't bad because they changed the parameters. Is that still going on?
The tests have been similar for the last few years, but the performance for us as well as, we can get statewide data that tells us, statewide, we're going, we're doing very parallel to what the state is doing as a whole. And we are doing better than some schools, and we're doing worse than others. The thing that it makes it difficult, being the testing coordinator and, and working with this, is yes, they keep changing the rules on us. One of the things that's, that's happening with math, we just have gone through that. The test is the same, but they've changed some of the standards that we're expected to teach in our math courses. So if, if they would just leave it where it was, we'd know where the finish line is. But right now, they keep going, oh, you're doing okay, but now we're gonna change that, that goal. And it might not be that we change the goal, but we change your process of getting there. So instead of being able to, you know, drive the car, we're gonna take it back and you have to ride a bicycle. Or their thought is that everything should always be going forward, but anytime you implement something new, there's going to be that time period that you're gonna see a decrease that comes with implementation because the teachers have to learn what they're doing and then try to move forward. So we're very comparable, and I had just put the, the Painesville ones on there.
Do we get enough analysis of this to see if there's something that we need to react to? So schools, especially this profession, looks at the MCA test, I hear like it's a waste of time. Obviously, the legislators must not believe that, because nothing changes. But our issue is, do you find something from this report that says, yep, we, we need to look at that? Or with the changing in the parameters from what you see, it looks like we're doing okay, doesn't it?
I, I think we're, we're doing, we're doing okay, and the other thing that makes it very difficult is if we're looking at it, and this chart that's up there right now is the overall school district. A lot of times what happens that gets very frustrating as a data person is that we're not comparing that same group of kids. So when we get test results for the eighth graders, we're comparing this year's eighth graders to last year's eighth graders, so they're ninth graders now. So you can have a very different makeup of the students. So we know that there are some classes that come through here that teachers are like, I'm excited because this is a group of really, really ambitious students and they're going to do really well. On the flip side, you're gonna have a group of students that come through and you go, oh my goodness, we are gonna really have to work for them. They don't give us that opportunity in their report to be able to do that, but we look at it that way. So we do that longitudinal information with it. And in looking at that, then we can look at the student growth. And that's the new component that's coming in with the North Star Analysis and Accountability, saying that instead of boom, but the one that, we're just gonna look at what happens for that test right now, we're gonna be able to follow them longitudinally. The sad thing for every school, and not only us, is the one that gets published out and given to the media is Painesville score has dropped, or the state of Minnesota's score has dropped. Because that's a quick and easy one, if you do that class by class, it takes a whole lot longer to examine the data. But we're, you know, class-wise, if we're staying and we're showing growth, then we're pleased. And we are doing that, this is that overall information with it. All right, the next one is college and career ready. They give us some information, they say that the way students do perform on their eighth grade MCA math test is going to be a good predictor. It's one that at eighth grade, it's really hard to determine. So we've chosen just like about ninety-five percent of the rest of the state to use that as their predictor. We use the ASVAB test that's given to all tenth graders. It is a, is a test that's given by the armed services, but it's not just for kids that are going into the military because it, it gives them that opportunity to take a standardized test that's going to be similar to what's coming up, but it also has an aptitude portion of it. And the gentlemen or ladies, and I think it's only been gentlemen every time that I've, I've been here, they come and they sit down with the students and they talk about how you did academically, and here are some careers that you might want to consider. Not just military careers, but this is something that it's showing that you have an aptitude for. And a lot of times, students need to find out about that. At the eleventh grade, we're required by the state to offer the ACT during regular school hours to all students. And offer rather than require, when they first came out, it was required. And we had some students that in giving the test, they probably shouldn't have been there because they took and got their name portioned up and then did this. And that's going to impact the scores overall. We had a really good class come through, so would have been Ashley's class in taking it that compared to the previous year, and that's how we've got that comparison, because it's only a one-time test. They had a twenty percent gain in our proficiency levels in the different categories. And that ACT is not as important for college entrance exams as it was, say, when I was going to college or, or anybody here might have been going, because they're looking more at that overall student. Because again, it is a high-stakes test. And if you're not a good test taker, and if you haven't prepared for it, and you are in there and you all of a sudden find out that there are five minutes left on this test, there are five minutes left on this test. And I've been giving that test here for a long time, there's a lot of panic that goes on. And I think Ashley could attest to that. The nice thing is that we give the students, based on the legislation, we give the students the opportunity to take it. And I kind of tell them, look at it, it counts, just like if you take it at St. Cloud State or wherever else is giving it, but use it as kind of that practice. We're also looking now at coming up with, we have access to some programs, we're going to have a meeting with junior and senior parents that they should be getting an email today that's gonna be next Wednesday night that says, here's some resources that you have. And because we have access to some new programs that are available through our Carl Perkins money. So we have that coming up, and, and that gives the kids that opportunity and the parents the opportunity to see. Looked too many times. And the final one is all students will graduate. It is a four-year average because of the fact that we have students that if they don't walk on graduation day, it's not calculated just by that, because they have the opportunity to come back and do some credit recovery and those types of things. And for our most current, which will be our two thousand and eighteen, even though in the spring we had our nineteen graduates came through, we had a hundred percent for two thousand and eighteen, when all is said and done with our four-year cohort. We're kind of looking at that one in the future as saying, kind of stay the course, because we're well above the state average on graduation. And our students come out of here, and we have lots of students going on, there's some other information that's going to be in place as far as finding out what our students are doing when they leave. So the state is now accumulating some of that information in another program that's there. We've also instituted in that going forward for it, with the FastBridge and RTI, we're hoping that we catch some of the kids with some additional interventions so that they're able to have maybe one-to-one work or a small group if they're not getting either the reading or the math in that initial time that the teacher's giving the instruction. There's two other, or three other, I think two or three other areas that we have to have. There's a portion that says equitable access to excellent diverse teachers or educators. With the licensing process that has changed in the state of Minnesota, it used to say highly qualified and we knew what that meant. Now they've changed to tier one, two, three, and four. And to our best guess, tier four teachers are considered highly qualified. If we have teachers that are, are new teachers to the system, they are going to fall into that category of the probationary and you can't, according to the way it reads right now, you can't be a highly qualified teacher if you're a brand-new teacher, because you don't have the experience. We don't have a lot of racial diversity in our school, although we're getting more and more as, as time goes on. And we're seeing that, but we don't have the teaching staff that reflects it at this point. And as I said before, our cell size for our racial diversity for most areas does not reach that twenty-student threshold that is set up by the state, because it would be statistically insignificant in looking at it. Then we have, this is actually two in one, we, because instead of sending in four different reports, the state said, we'll just wrap everything into one. So we have the Achievement and Integration Grant, Painesville is part of the Lake Wobegon Collaborative, Melrose. And you have to have a school district that is either the school district where it's happening or one that is adjacent to it with its borders, that is racially, an identified racially-isolated district. Melrose is the one for us, so we collaborate with them. They put in the most work we, as far as putting the grant together. And I'm not even a hundred percent certain the amount that we get for the dollars, but it takes care of a variety of different supplemental programs that we have. You always have to have an achievement goal and an integration goal, so we get that, that ethnic and economic diversity that's going to be there. Painesville and the collaborative, just like every other one except one district in the state, did not meet their achievement goal with their integration grant. And with that, the state said that you're gonna have to have a twenty percent set aside to do improvement. What that really means, we're still in a debate for it. Because again, just like we talked about with free and reduced, you're gonna have students that most need the help and are probably the ones that we need to get caught up the most, but they also have the fewest resources. And providing those resources for those students and expecting that greater amount of achievement is really hard. Especially the older that those students get. This is just a little bit about the North Star Accountability System. It is the new way to look at data, it's just, it's just their process of putting it together. So if we go into it, we can see that comparison like you asked about to other schools and breaking it down into our categories. And it's part of Minnesota's plan for meeting the requirements for the federal law, Every Student Succeeds Act. And again, it says equity, if you're on any committee that deals with school equity, we're trying, but I don't think we're there yet. So it's collaboration, support, partnership, working together, rather than our school's not doing well, you're going to have to do these things. And it's new enough, and I think we're in our second year with it, that we're all trying, trying to figure out how it's going to work. This is just kind of their statement about how they're looking. This is just kind of their statement about how they're looking at it, and gives you those, those areas. We're looking at growth and more of the well-rounded student now, rather than saying, "We're picking one data point and saying, 'This is Ashley Top,' or, "'This is Paige Welling,' and saying that that day is going to define you as a student, it's not going to, we're looking for that more well-rounded student." And I believe that's it. Any questions?
I just have one question.
Yep.
So, when we fill this stuff up for the state, is there things that we learn in a report like this to the state that's valid in our process of educating our students?
I don't know.
You know what I'm saying?
I, I do know what you're saying.
The government comes down with all these things you have to do, and I watch all this people time going in it, but it seems like we're managing the school for the kid's education not based upon all this stuff. Are you with me?
I, I am with you. In fact, we have to have the report into the Department of Education by the 15th, and in the meeting that we went to, just kind of shook, shook my head a lot, because we've always turned in our full report, and then somebody at the Department of Education has taken it and kind of accumulated all the pertinent data to be able to put it in, so we can compare everybody. And we were told that we have to do a cut-and-paste and put it into their format, so they can just hit the button and get the, the spreadsheet. So...
I wonder sometimes if you went back three years and asked them for the data that they had, even if they have it yet.
Oh, they'd be able to give it to me, but I don't know that they'd be able to tell me what it said.
Yeah.
You know, and, and it's one of those that, we have spent a lot of time, as a school district, working on our strategic plan and, and looking at it, as far as more than these five things, looking at what our facilities need to do, and our community involvement, and everything else. And this very much is a, a prescribed strategic plan for every school district in the state, that, that I think they want to have something like this to compare apples to apples, instead of saying, "Painesville has an emphasis on this, and, and we're moving forward with it." I also think that, that sometimes they lose sight of, or don't remember, we need to do what's good for kids. And we have some kids that get very stressed with the MCAs. Our emphasis over the last couple of years has been, "Do the best that you can," but realize that we're going to put different things that we're going to compare you. That is just a single piece of data that we're going to look at for what our students are showing. What ours, you know, we also, at that meeting, had a, a really good discussion about, what does success look like for students in Painesville? And we looked to our students to give us that information, and I would say, and those of you that were there, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would say that the students still place a very high value on their grade-point average, but they also looked at it as the experiences, and what am I gaining? Is it just that I'm spitting out information for your test, Ms. Canole, or for that test? Or, what can I walk away and say, "I get this, this is something that I can look at and go, 'Yeah, not my thing to be passionate about,' or, 'Yeah, that's something I want to explore more.'" And would that be correct?
Yeah, I think the students that were there, there's a lot of pressure to get a good grade, and so, it's all about getting that grade, whereas the students were expressing. I think that, that they're, they want that experience, they want to be able to apply that, and what are other ways that they can be evaluated, versus just that grade. Because also, forces, well, not forces, it's still their choice, but are students not taking potentially classes that they'd get a worse grade in, because they're so concerned about the GPA, and they're here to learn, and are we actually kind of polarizing that by, "You want a 4-0, there's certain classes you're not going to take, because I know it's really, really tough, and it's not the point." And I think the students seemed very aware of that, at that meeting, but it's the reality of what's happening.
Any questions from anybody else? Thank you very much.
You are welcome.
Nice presentation, again.
Thank you.
Okay, then, we'll move to policy review, first readings. Can I kind of send that back to you?
Sure. So, the Policy Committee met on December 3rd, they reviewed five policies, four of which there are no changes or no recommended changes at this time. Those are Policies 515, 520, 521, and 522. They do have one policy, Policy 516, which is student medication. There is a recommended change to that, that is, in the, the materials that are provided at the link. To summarize the change, and some of you may have, have heard this, I know it was on the news this summer, I think there were some newscast personalities that were kind of having some fun with it, but the legislature did make some changes to school districts and the ability to have students carry sunscreen and apply sunscreen, and that, that paragraph has now been added to medications that are allowed to be carried by students and, and used at school. That is really the only change to Policy 516.
May I, can I add one second?
Yeah.
Do you want to approve the World's Best Workforce?
Thank you very much.
Oh, yes, sorry about that.
Thank you. Good catch.
Do we have a motion to approve the 2019 World's Best Workforce Report?
I'll move.
As presented. A motion from Rick.
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say no? Carried. Okay.
So, now we're back at the first reading. So, so, Policy Committee members, you can certainly add to that, but ultimately, it's just that updating of student medication policy and putting the sunscreen language in there that was approved of the legislature.
Do we talk about the forms?
Oh, the other, the other conversation we had was about forms. So, we, we had some conversation about the, there are, currently, there are some form, we do not put any of our forms associated with policies on our website. Most of our policies make some reference to that the form is located in the building office, or the principal's office, or something along those lines. There's a conversation that we had with the Policy Committee, just asking the question, "Would it just simply simplify everybody's life if the forms are just simply on our website?" Then, we can reference that in the policies, and when somebody calls and asks if they're looking for a form, it's really simple for a clerical person, or the principal, or whoever, to just say, "Yep, they're at the, they're on the website, here's where you go," and you can get the form and print it off and, and turn it in. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Policy Committee, but I think the consensus with the group was to just make a move in that direction, where those forms would just be on the website as well.
Good idea.
Part of the reason is to, if it, if the forms live in a district officer, in someone's office, you're asking somebody to make, like, have to come in and potentially feel like they're confronting someone, or making it more accessible, so that parents or whomever can feel maybe more, or, there's less barriers, I guess, to have access.
Makes perfect sense.
Makes sense.
Okay, so...
So, it'd be first reading, well, after first reading, we'll post 516 with the changes, and then you would come back in January at the business meeting and do a second reading and approval.
Just did a question, just out of personal interest. Say, a student is a diabetic, does the nurse have to administer the insulin, or do the students get that choice? Is that, it gets kind of hairy.
No, there would be a medical plan put in place, and so, I think those would, are really dependent upon case-by-case, and, you know, all cases are kind of unique.
Exactly.
And so, it would really need to be a case-by-case basis. There would obviously be doctors involved that would assist the school with what's appropriate and what isn't as well.
Thanks.
So, we still need the motion to approve?
Correct, for first reading, yep.
We need a motion to approve the first reading of Policy 516, student medication.
Someone.
We have a motion from Cheryl, I'll be the second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say no? Carried. Okay, then, we move to the first meeting in January.
So, we do need to schedule a meeting for January, otherwise, this is the last meeting that this body will ever have, so, we do need to make sure we get a, a January meeting scheduled.
How would I turn that?
I don't know. Last year, what the Board decided to do was to have just a strict organizational meeting on the first Monday in January. It works out well, especially in years where there were new board members elected, because then you can seat your new board members. There are lots of districts that, every year, their organizational meeting is simply on the first Monday in January that's eligible. So, my question to the Board is, if we want to do the exact same thing as last year, obviously, we wouldn't be seating any board members, because we haven't had new board members elected, but we would still have the organizational meeting, you would still elect a chair, a vice chair, a clerk, a treasurer, and then you'd go through the committee responsibilities. There are some annual notices that the Board would do as part of setting up the organization for calendar year 2020 as well, but the meeting would be restricted to just the organizational activities. It wouldn't be, you wouldn't be paying bills, you wouldn't be approving any personnel items or anything like that, it would just be the organizational activities. If we want to do that, when I look at a calendar, that first Monday in January date is January 7th of 2020.
It's actually...
January 6th.
6th.
Thank you. It's January 6th of 2020.
I would prefer the 7th, because I won't be here the 6th, but that's... I always keep my Tuesdays available, but...
So, it'd be nice if everybody was here. So, what does everybody think? Does the 7th work?
7.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I mean, you gotta be here. I know that your, your schedule of the winter time probably gets pretty packed.
Nope, yeah, I can make either one.
Okay, January 7th at 6:00, is that what we're going to do? Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Okay, let's...
And I'll be in this location. Lynda, you got everything you need for that meeting, okay? And then, can we get a motion, a second, and a vote on that?
So, we need a motion to have the first meeting in January, on January 7th, Tuesday, January 7th, at 6 o'clock.
What do you motion?
I have a motion from Thomas.
I'll second.
I have a second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say no? Carried. Okay, review the upcoming meeting schedule.
So, just a reminder, then, the upcoming meetings are tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. We will have, hopefully, the final design team meeting, right here in this room, and then we can now add Tuesday, January 7th, at 6:00 p.m. for the organizational meeting of the Board. Those are the two upcoming meetings that I have on the calendar.
Okay.
Aren't we going to have another meeting before the end of the year regarding getting that approved, so we can get that out for bids?
Questions on approval for letting the design out for bid?
I don't think we will know that until UNESCO has the final design meeting tomorrow, and if at that final...
And they will let us know...
If at that final design thing, they say, "We need to schedule a special meeting in the end of December for that," then we could absolutely go and do that. There's nothing on the calendar right now for a special meeting, it's really going to be up to when UNESCO is, is going to have that. I personally, I believe we will have a special meeting coming up in early January to do exactly what you're talking about, to approve that stuff and get those things out for bids.
Because otherwise, your meeting is tomorrow, and that's like, almost another month before we even meet, which this wouldn't even be on that, on that meeting, according to your organizational, it's just an organizational.
No.
So, it'd be like another month, at least.
And that's, I'm assuming there will be a special meeting, but I don't have any, any of that on my calendar, so...
Great.
I, I would only be speculating if I would, would add that on there.
But UNESCO should have a better idea of the timeline that we need to do so, and then, we can let everybody know, so, we're kind of at a point when some of the design part of it's done, and we've kept everybody informed, that it needs to move back to the Board anyway, so we'll let everybody know what the thoughts are from UNESCO tomorrow. That make sense? Maggie, you probably can do that automatically without even asking, don't you? So, okay.
So, those are the two meetings I have, just as a reminder, and to get them on the calendar, okay?
Okay, so then, next, we are going to close this meeting to evaluate the superintendent, and I know there's some specific thing we used to, does anybody know, do I need to state what the statute is?
We just need a motion to close the meeting for the purpose of conducting the superintendent evaluation, and in the motion, we have to include the time. We need to second that motion, and then we need a majority vote.
I'll make a motion, uh, close the meeting for conducting the superintendent evaluation at 2:35 p.m.
Okay. Right, I have a motion from Thomas, a second from Maggie. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say no? Carried.